Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
I'm the seventh floor. At this time, I would request a motion that it hereby be determined that this public meeting was preceded by public notice and is determined to be legal and in open session.
Motion.
Second.
A motion by Wilson, seconded by Ryan, that hereby be determined that this public meeting was preceded by public notice and is determined to be legal and in open session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote Hoppel.
Yes.
Ryan? Yes. Schut?
Yes.
Waddle? Yes. Watson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Six, zero. This is Watson with your allegiance and with my allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, Antigone Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Review and act on minutes of the October regular Board of Education meetings. Are there any amendments or amendments that are needed? Seeing none, I would take a motion to approve the minutes of the October regular Board of Education meetings.
I'll approve them.
I'll second.
I have the motion by Schut, seconded by Hoppel, to approve the minutes of the October regular Board of Education meetings. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote Ryan.
Yes.
Schut?
Yes.
Waddle? Yes. Watson?
Yes.
Wilson? Yes. Hoppel?
Yes.
Motion passes six, zero. Review treasurer's report for all funds. Anything that you wanted to report to the board, Mr. Mom?
No, I haven't.
Any questions, Mr. Mom, on the treasurer's report? All right, we'll move on. Presentation of claims to be approved and paid in November from the general fund.
Everything looks good. We had, the credit card bill came in late, so that will be processed. We'll go ahead and add that on, approve that hopefully for this. And that will be processed and ready for tomorrow. And then there's another about, that was about a little over fifty-six hundred with that. And then the act, there was a fifteen hundred that was going to go to activities account as well, and just, it came in late, and so we'll get in on this for now. Otherwise, everything will be fine.
All right. Are there any questions? Can I get a motion to approve and pay, can I get a motion to approve and pay the claims in November from the general fund?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All right, the motion by Ryan, seconded by Wilson, to approve and pay the claims in November from the general fund. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote Schut.
Yes.
Waddle? Yes. Watson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Hoppel?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Motion passes six, zero. There were no requests to address the Board of Education. We'll move on. That's your question, six. All right, information items. Are there any questions on the reports that were submitted by the administration?
Actually, I saw you were going to bus train, level one, is that right?
I did that, I'm honest. Yeah. I'm certified.
I thought you were, then I read that in my report, I was confused, that's why I'm asking. I don't know. Okay. But I'm confused, it's fine. I was just curious. I thought you'd already done it, but I didn't know what was done.
Okay. Are there any other committees that have a report for the board tonight?
Yeah, the Finance Negotiation Personnel Committee met on November third. We met with the Teachers Association, they're negotiators for their association. We had good conversation. Insurance came back way higher than what was initially anticipated, and that really kind of changed everything for negotiations. So, we had good conversation, talked about some ideas, they're going to take that back to the teachers and see how it goes. So, we hope to have something done and maybe negotiated agreement approved or to the table for the December meeting, that's kind of the hope. We'll see how it goes.
All right, are there any other reports?
Nothing for billions of years.
All right, we'll move on to new business. We're going to start tonight. We have Karen Hossi and Steve Williams here from KSB Law. They represent the district and the Board of Education. So, I believe they're going to start with a presentation of some kind, and then some questions from the board members.
Sorry, I'm Karen, I just came in from the other direction, and it hurts me, so sorry.
We'll wait again.
Yeah, we have been asked to come to present some information, and we talked about the best format, and perhaps question and answer might be the best format there. I know there are issues that the board wanted to address, and so we're happy to do that. We serve at your pleasure, and so we want to make sure we cover the topics that you guys want to talk about. And so...
Well, I don't know if it'd be helpful for President Wallace, we kind of say who we are and what we do.
Yeah.
So, I'm Karen Hossi, this is Steve Williams. Between the two of us, we've been representing public school districts for fifty years. We graduated law school together twenty-five years ago. And so, in the years that we've worked with school boards, we sort of advise about all the different theories and summary laws that apply. And so, every so often, when patrons have questions or boards have questions, it's just as easy to bring us in, in person, to kind of say, "Well, yes, it's seventy-nine two fifteen that says blah, 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 blah." So, we're sort of here as a resource and to answer questions. And so, our particular expertise is representing school districts in the state of Nebraska for a really long time, including Gilder, one of the hundred and ninety roughly districts that we represent in Nebraska and South Dakota. So, that's kind of our background and who we are and why we're there. So, I rolled in late because I was at the Activity Directors Conference. That's, you know, like the kind of thing that we do is travel around and share information with the school administrators, so.
All right, well, there were several questions that were submitted by board members, and then also some questions that came up during public comments during the last several meetings. So, certainly, I have a list here of other board members who can stop me at any time and ask questions that you might have as well. But I'm going to start with a section about open meetings. Has the board violated statute four dash fourteen oh eight, which states, "Every meeting of a public body shall be open to the public in order that citizens may exercise their democratic privilege of attending and speaking at board meetings, at meetings of public bodies, except as otherwise provided by the Constitution of the United States, federal statutes, and the Open Meetings Act."
And I would say, to my knowledge, I'm not aware of the board violating that provision. These meetings are public meetings, they're open to everybody. And so, unless there is a closed session, a closed session, the public can be excluded from. Short of that, if it's a meeting, it's a public meeting, you get to be there. Now, there is a kind of a misconception, it's not a meeting of the public, it's a meeting of the board in public, and so that's kind of different. And so, the public gets to have input only when the act says you do. And so, you get to attend every meeting. You may or may not be allowed to speak at every meeting. What the act says is you are, the board has to allow comments at some of the meetings. We've talked to the Attorney General's Office for the last twenty years about this issue. Some, some boards allow comment at every single meeting, some limit it, and so we ask, "What's the limit?" If you wanted to have the fewest amount of public comments at a public gathering, what would it be? And they said, "Oh, about quarterly, so four times a year." So, if you wanted to, you could limit it to four times a year. Don't have to, but you could. You could allow comments at every single meeting if you wanted to, don't have to, but you could. And so, that's, that's what the law says, that's more of a policy matter. There are times where it makes sense not to have public comment, and frankly, it's when there's been a contentious issue, you've already allowed the public, it's an opportunity to talk about it. We don't want to have another three or ten hour meeting. We want it, we provided the public with the information, the board has all the information it needs to go, let's get moving. So, there, there are times where it would be appropriate not to have public comment at a meeting. And other times, if you have a special meeting and it's just a very limited purpose, there's often times where there's not public comment at those too. But that's, that's the state of the law, the Attorney General weighs in on this all the time. All the public bodies in the state are subject to the Attorney General's control, they're the ones who interpret the act. So, if anybody had a complaint, they go to the Attorney General, and they're the ones that issue opinions and things they call disposition letters, they're a little less formal, and they give us a lot of guidance on these meetings and how they work.
I'll chime in on that and also share that the Attorney General has been clear that in addition to not having to allow public comment at every single meeting, the board can also limit public comment to a certain amount of time. So, the board could say, you know, "Tonight, we've got a crowded agenda, we've only got thirty minutes for public comment," or "Only got fifteen minutes." And then, then everybody gets to, you know, whoever wants to speak, they get to divvy at that time, however they want. But there's no, there's nothing improper about limiting the time either. And if members of the public are interested, the Attorney General's website is actually very informative.
It's very good.
If you go to the Nebraska Attorney General's website, they have a tab on the Open Meetings Act where they kind of explain what the act provides, and sometimes they even have links to disposition letters in there.
With that time limitation, so would you do first come, first served? Or would you, or do you let everyone speak? You know, you see what I mean?
Yep.
What's the right way to do that?
The way the AG wants you to do it is, so you, and I just, I was just on the phone with the board about this on the way here, you say how much time you're going to give. So, we've dedicated thirty minutes. And then you say, "Who all wants to speak?" There's ten of you, good news, three minutes each. There's fifty of you, I can't do that math in my head, which you know. But so, and we said, like, because the attorneys that interpret this act were like, "Dude, that would be like, that would be thirty seconds a person." And they're like, "Yep." Now, members of the public, you then can, like, swap your time, you know? I'll give my thirty seconds to Steve, and everybody cobbles together their time to one spokesperson. But the AG says that it's more important that we split the time evenly than we do the first come, first served kind of situation. So, you can have a limit on the total amount of public comment, and you can also have a limit on the per-person comment. So, that can be three or five or, you know, whatever time the board sets.
I just got a question. If, if a board...
Feel bad that you're first.
Yeah, I'm sorry. If a board would, like, for twenty years, they've had a public comment section, you know, at every meeting for twenty years, and, and they've set precedents. And then all of a sudden, you know, to your comment, you might, it might behoove you to not do this, you know, this one meeting because of whatever circumstances. If a board, all of this, all of a sudden shuts that off and says, "We're not doing it," has there been any kind of litigation from the public in any way saying, "Well, you've done, you know, you've set precedents for twenty years, and now all of a sudden, because of maybe a controversy, you've decided to not have the, the meeting this month?" Has there ever been a problem like that?
I'm, I'm not aware of any litigation in Nebraska. I am aware of complaints to the Attorney General's Office about, "Hey, they didn't allow us to comment." And there have been many complaints about that, we weren't allowed to comment at this meeting, and the AG defaults to, they allowed comments at some meetings, and so that's okay. And so, even if you've done it for forever, you can change your practice if you wanted to do that.
I'll also say that, like, we don't want to handcuff this board with what boards ten years ago did. You know, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know what the burning issues of the day are in any specific district, but, I mean, if you can't change, you have to change sometime. So, there is nothing that says there's any, like, binding precedent that if you did it in the past, you have to do it going forward.
Which leads into the next question. When matters are brought up during the public comment that aren't on the agenda, is it appropriate for members of the board to respond how?
I'll start. This answer change, has changed recently. It used to be, the Attorney General's position used to be, and this was, was many years ago, in particular Dale Comer was, was the person that was in charge of open meetings issues at the AG's office. His position was, the public could come and talk, they get their five minutes, they could talk about anything they wanted. And I said, "Let me, let me get this right. I could show up and read my chocolate chip cookie recipe for five minutes, and there's nothing they could do." "That's right." I said, "This has nothing to do with school." He goes, "That's right." I said, "I could read from the Quran at this meeting for my five minutes." "That's right." Okay, it was pretty clear, I can talk about anything you want. The people who are in charge now say, "No, no, 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 that's, no, it's got to be school-related." In fact, if you wanted to, you could limit it to the items that are on the agenda for that particular meeting. So, that is a big change, in my opinion. And, and so, that's, that's the position they're taking, is you could limit it to what's on the agenda. That's, that's really up to the board, it's a policy decision, and you guys would be free to say, "Yes, we're going to limit it to the agenda items," or, or no, or not.
So, then I'm going to swing in to, to answer the corollary, which is your question, correct question, Chris. So, the agenda says nothing about purchasing new buses, but Steve here is very committed to convincing y'all to spend the money on purchasing a new bus. Steve's right, in theory, the board president could say, "Sorry, buses aren't on the agenda, we're not accepting public comment on that." But if the board president allows public comment on the buses, the board now is, even if you make a compelling case, the best case, it's a free bus. If it's not on the agenda, the board can't do anything about what the public comment was about. Which is one of the reasons I always hated Dale Comer's rule, because it kind of sets the board up to look kind of like, like they're not listening, because if the public is saying whatever the public is saying, if it's not on the agenda, there's literally nothing, it would be a violation of law for the board to take any action. And then board members, because of that, our best advice is when board, when members of the public make comments, you pull, you listen, take some notes, and then politely say, "Thank you," and then move on, because it's not really productive to have a back and forth, because it's not like, I don't remember even watching the BBC, how they do it like question time with the Prime Minister. Nobody does that, okay? I'm in...
Some of us have one.
So, like, in Great Britain, the Prime Minister has to answer questions from Parliament like once a week, and they're, it's hilarious, because it's all these stuffy people talking to each other. But, but that's not what this is, right? It's not really proper to have a back and forth with the board. So, members of the public, if the board says, "Thank you very much, we're going to move on," that's because that's what we've advised them of. And board members, that's really your safest bet, because we don't want to go down a rabbit trail or discuss something that's not on the agenda and inadvertently commit an open meetings violation by engaging in, you know, conversation with the public. So, it's weird, but that's, that's really the best...
What kind of violation could be committed if you just discuss it? I mean, board action would be a vote, correct? Or a decision made? That's, I'm asking.
Nope, that's such a good question, and that's why I'm, I'm agreeing with you. So, the, the Open Meetings Act says not just that things that you're going to take action on have to be on the agenda, but things that you're going to discuss and consider as well. That's why you see agenda items at lawyers' drafts, they discuss, consider, and take all necessary action. So, if you say, "Well, tell me more about this excellent bus," and there's a long discussion that wasn't on the agenda, the dude that's adamantly opposed to you buying the bus is going to be ticked, because he would have shown up at the board meeting to talk about the bus if it would have been on the agenda, even if you're not taking action. So, public comment isn't, well, depending on how you interpret, you know, it could be anything, but if the board's going to discuss or consider it, that has to be on the agenda, even if you don't take action.
What if it's to clear up a misinterpreted fact?
So, board patron says, "I am so ticked off that you're buying a bus, we didn't even see it on the agenda." At that point, I think it would be appropriate for Mr. Mom to say, "I'm, I'm sorry, we're not buying the bus." But I don't want board members and the public to say, "Well, we're not buying a bus because you people won't pay your taxes." I mean, I'm just making stuff up now, right? So, I, if it's just some simple fact, I think the superintendent can jump in and fix it. But if it's like a point-counterpoint, then I get nervous that that's not really proper, and it's not productive.
Okay, in regards to eighty-four fourteen eleven, which requires the publication of our meeting notices and so on, can you describe, or would you explain what the requirements are of the district to meet the statute?
Sure. And this, this rule also changed within about the last year. You used to be able to post it in town, if you wanted to do that, you didn't have to put it in the newspaper. Now, the law says you must publish the notice of the, of the meeting in a newspaper of general circulation within the district. Now, in many districts, that's going to give you multiple options, right? Most have the Omaha World Herald, the Lincoln Paper, the Grand Island Paper, the Saskatchewan Paper. One of those is going to be circulated. And so, especially in smaller districts, that's their daily. And so, if you need to get a meeting notice in quick, because you can't get it in the local paper because their deadlines come yawn, you would use one of those papers. On the other hand, most districts use the local paper to, to post the notice, as long as, again, it's a newspaper of general circulation within the district. And so, that's, that's the new requirement, it has to be in the newspaper. The choice of newspapers up to the board, you, you guys can decide. Our advice typically is to list several in your policy, just in case. Like I said, we generally would put it in paper X, but we needed the daily paper, so we put it in Y for that, especially for the special means. Regular means are easy, we know what their deadlines are, and we put them in. But those special meetings, a lot of those are going to, you're going to find, those might be in different papers, and that's true for districts throughout the state. Oh, yeah, and there is a different, there is a piece in the statutes about, I think it's class two cities or something, and villages, and they can still post. Now, I, I should clarify, you guys could post all you want, you still have to put it in paper. And so, putting it in the paper is required, you are allowed to use any other method in addition to that. But other, other entities are allowed to actually just post still. But schools are not lucky enough to have that anymore, right? I've hated this bill, I think it set us way back, it would have made more sense to say, "Put this on the front page of your website." Everybody's got the internet, everybody knows where the website is, would have made way more sense if they didn't do it, so we're stuck with newspapers now.
So, Mrs. Waddle, would you explain how the district meets its obligations of the statute?
Yep. We send it to the local newspaper. I've posted one on the door for years. It used to be on the inside, and you could see it through the door, but now we ditched the doors, now it's on the outside, and we put one at the post office. We used to take one to the community center and to the bank. Now, we just do the front door, post office, and so the newspaper is really all we have to do, I don't have to put it on the wall.
You don't have to. Oh, a lot of schools still do it.
We're just doing it just...
Yeah, yeah, like I said, you can do other things in addition to, no, no harm in doing that.
But the papers...
The papers are the ones that have to be...
That's a new statute that just went to effect, so. So, I, I have gotten aggravated patrons like, "It's always at the bank, why isn't it at the bank?"
Because the UNICARE will change the laws on us.
So, that's...
So, when, when these laws come out like that, how do we know? Like, I mean, besides looking at your website, or, I mean, where's the page, like a daily page to look at, like, "This has changed, this has changed," so we can inform patrons so they're not upset with us?
You guys are actually policy subscribers, we do put out a memo every year that says, "Here, here's the law changes that we've had, here's the policy changes we had to make."
That comes out in the name of the janitor's memo that's just...
Now, if you wanted to, you could track all the legislation, I'll tell you, I, I do that at our office, it was nine hundred bills were introduced, and we tracked a hundred and forty-ish of them. It's very time-consuming, but, or you could just wait for a memo, that's, that's what I do.
We also have a blog. We blog pretty regularly about, like, legal updates, and again, anybody can subscribe to that if you want to. We just put something out today about the retirement system, which is super boring if you're not a teacher, but... So, yeah, we do, but it, it's hard to keep track of all this new stuff that develops, so we try to have those communications.
All right, can you talk to us a bit about the requirements of the minutes of the board?
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
So, with the postings, whether, would you put it on the website, obviously we want to, obviously that's subject to change, right, up to twenty-four hours before the meeting?
The agenda.
The agenda. So, is there a requirement that that's posted with it? You know, when it was posted, that it's subject to change about twenty-four hours?
You, you can do the agenda in one of two ways. You can publish the agenda with your meeting notice. We generally don't recommend that, because once it's published, it's hard to change. And then, yeah, and it does get costly, especially if you're doing the Omaha World Herald, they'll, they'll take it to you. But the other way is to say, "A copy of the agenda is kept continuously current and is maintained in the superintendent's office during normal business hours." And then, yeah, that agenda can be changed up to twenty-four hours before a meeting.
But you wouldn't be able to, to publish or post something prior to that, even if you said, "Subject to change up to twenty-four hours?" Just so, I mean, that kind of clarifies, this is what we think is going to be on it, but it may not all be there, if you want to know, you need to check that for twenty-four hours. Is that okay to do that?
It's okay. It's, the reason, Stephen, I don't like it, is because we don't want people to ever feel misled, right? So, you publish an agenda, then you change it twenty-four hours before the meeting, and it's like, "Dang it, I was here just to talk about the bus." But there's nothing unlawful about that, as long as when you publish the agenda, you include, and Nick, we use this language, which you use now, a, a copy of the agenda is kept continuously current in the office of the superintendent, this draft agenda is subject to change.
It's at the bottom of the board.
Yeah. And you guys use Spark?
Yep, it's on our website.
I was going to say, that's the other thing is...
So, is the agenda that's on our website?
Perfect. So, that, that Spark is a, like, internet-based public meetings piece of software that the state school board association puts out. And so, then that, every time, I love Spark because it also proves when the agenda was edited, right? So, now we have a date stamp any time a change is made, and so, the public can find out immediately when the agenda gets up to the board.
All right, the requirements of minutes.
Oh, that's good.
Requirements of minutes, okay. In terms of content for when they have to be ready, or...
When they're available, and how they get published.
Sure. The minutes have to be available within ten business days after, after your meeting. Or, if you hold a special meeting before then, then they have to be ready by the time of that special meeting. So, those, that can really speed it up if you have a special meeting a couple days after that regular meeting. So, you have to have those available. You don't have to publish your minutes in, in the newspaper. You do have to publish a concise summary and a list of things, but the minutes themselves don't ever have to be published or distributed to anyone. But they just have to be available to the public again in the superintendent's office.
And of course, they wouldn't be official until they're approved at the meeting, right? They just have to be, a draft has to be...
There actually is nothing in the law that requires you to approve minutes. And so, a, a lot of schools are getting the habit of, you know, they put it out on day ten and they put draft on it. And then, the next meeting, the, the board approves them and makes them official, they'll take draft off. There's nothing in law, it's, it's just a common practice, but there's nothing in the law that, that governs that at all.
So, like, the minutes on day ten are the official minutes, but if the board sees an error at, at an irregular meeting, you can amend the official minutes. But technically, the Public Meetings Act wants minutes out sooner than every thirty days, so that's why you don't have to have them.
So, Mrs. Waddle, how do we currently handle the minutes?
I get them done, and have a couple of board members just read them over, and then I just put them on Spark, and at the top it says, "Pendulum." And so, I don't need to do that, so... What? On the minutes?
Yeah.
There's a copy right by our window when you check in, right by the board when you sign in, there's a copy of our minutes within the ten-day window. Always welcome to come on in.
I don't know, I just, yeah, I'll type them in the morning or the next day, and I try to get them to Chris and Mike, or at least three of them to look over, and just go look
Very, that's lawful and very difficult.
And then also, they get mailed out, most, once we approve them, you know, the next month.
To the following month, yeah.
Then it goes in a mailer out to, you know, everybody in our district, and they get mailed out as well. mailed out as well. But because of that timeline, you know, by the time they're getting it, it's actually two months.
So that's, that, those, the minutes don't become official when they're mailed out, they become official when you draft it on?
But they're ready for, yeah, I mean, anyone can look at them.
For even good, bad as well.
Right.
Sure.
Right.
Yeah, you're going above and beyond and sending them out there, so, that's great.
Other questions about Open Meetings Act? I'm sure I did them all. All right, so the next category is...
The content, especially like when, like, if, okay, so here we have, Mr. Mom has special education, his superintendent reports the maintenance report, and the minutes I just put that they presented. And I sat in a business manager's meeting and listened to...
Justin, right?
Yep. Came and said not to paraphrase what we think we heard, and that for us to just be able to put, "That was presented," and that's good.
I mean, you're supposed to have a concise summary of what was discussed by the board. And so, if there was no discussion and it was just a report presented, I think that's accurate, you just put, "Report was presented."
But then as we get into like the new business and information and all that stuff, there's more in that. But if someone, when they give me the board reports, and when you look at the one that we have from, like, the Mr. Peter Act, for instance, if it's this, you know, it's two, three pages long, I don't feel like, I mean, if I were to put something in there that I thought it said, and then someone in the public reads it and goes, "That's not at all what we got," then I just, I, that's a conflict, like, that's not a good...
Do you attach a copy of his report to the minutes?
It's in Spark.
It's, no, it isn't.
Okay. I, that would be the easiest way to do that, would be just to incorporate those documents in Spark, I would put them on Spark.
Do you have them in Spark when you do the agenda, and you click on it for the superintendent's report?
They are, and, yeah, they're in there, yep, so they can just, okay.
Yeah, that's same thing, yeah, that's perfect.
Two things about minutes that I will say that sometimes members of the public are confused about, and there is two sides of the same coin. Sometimes people are really ticked off that their comments are not recorded in the minutes, but again, like the AG said, it's a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public, so I would not summarize a public comment. The reason I'm laughing is, the flip side of that coin is there is somebody right now who's threatening to sue the local paper because they did report what she said during public comment. So it's sort of like a, you know, no matter what, someone's gonna be unhappy kind of situation. But I would just say the board received public comment, so that we know that we're meeting our at least quarterly obligation to do that, but I wouldn't say, "Who spoke?" You don't have to, you can, you don't have to.
You don't have to list the number of patrons that are meeting, or...
No, who spoke?
In fact, we've had complaints filed, because you'll write down, "Yes, Tim was here." And Tim filed a complaint saying, "How dare you list me for attending a public meeting." And the AG said, "No, it's not a violation," but again, it just shows that sometimes if you put too much information in, it gets you in trouble too, so.
Could you put the roll call?
Yep.
Would you use Spark?
All right, other questions have come up in the area of hiring. Would you please explain how a board member can commit a conflict of interest, and what is the appropriate measure they should take to avoid a conflict of interest?
So this, we're shifting now from the Open Meetings Act to the Political Accountability and Disclosure Act. The Political Accountability and Disclosure Commission also has a website, so all this information we're gonna share with you is, I mean, it's, the state government does a nice job of making this kind of stuff available, if you know where to go look. So Political Accountability and Disclosure says that a board member would commit a conflict of interest if he or she convinced the board to hire a family member who is not qualified for the position, so like, my wife doesn't have a teaching certificate, hire her anyway. Or if they have the hire happen through a surreptitious process, like, nobody knows that they're being hired and it's, you know, a secret. But as long as you go through the open process of advertising and interviewing and put it on the board agenda, then hiring a family member is not a conflict of interest.
And I would piggyback on that, it's immediate family member.
Yes.
Which is very, very limited, it's counterintuitive. You could hire your brother to do whatever you want, not a conflict of interest. It's limited to your child who lives with you, a spouse, and then a weird one, somebody who lives with you and you can claim on your taxes, which could be anybody. Well, I guess it'd be the children that never leave, but we won't get into that. So, but, that's it, I mean, we're talking three categories, and so there's a whole group of people, your mother-in-law, any in-law, every in-law doesn't count, and so it's counterintuitive, to me at least, because it, well, it sounds like a conflict of interest to me, their family member, but they define immediate family member very, very narrowly, and so there is no technical legal violation to do that.
And the statute is really written to keep board members from personally enriching themselves in money, so if you think of it like that, that makes a little bit of sense, like, if you hire a spouse, presumably, that money's going to the household budget, and that would be enriching a board member. But if you hire your brother, unless he's living in your basement drinking your beer, that does not personally enrich the board member, so that's kind of the thought process behind that statute.
All right, because it came up as an accusation on one of our board members, would it be a conflict of interest for a board member if the brother-in-law of a brother of the school board member was hired?
No. Because it wouldn't be a violation for the brother, and certainly wouldn't be a violation for the brother-in-law of the brother, so no.
Would you recommend a board member in that situation to recuse himself or herself from an interview of such a situation?
I'll say this, legally you don't have to. If I was a board member, would I recuse myself, I wouldn't.
See, Stephen and I had this conversation this afternoon.
Because it's always bothered me that that list is so narrow. In my personal view, like, I have a conflict hiring my brother, and so I'm not gonna participate in that, I'm just not willing to, even though I could, but I wouldn't.
See, and I kind of feel the opposite. I feel like I've been elected by these people to do this job, I should do this, I should vote as often as I can, you know what I mean, unless I'm legally prohibited from doing so. So, but that's just like an opinion, the law is clear that you can vote.
Oh, yeah.
And honestly, you know, my siblings, might hurt them if I voted on them, or not, they should get hired.
So if a board member did recuse themselves in that situation, they'd be going above what the statute requires?
Wait, oh, yes.
Yeah, I think probably you could say, hey, just so everybody knows, this is my brother-in-law, that makes me a little bit nervous because we don't wanna make it sound like, "My brother-in-law, yo." So I, it kind of, in small towns, it's hard, I mean, board members are gonna get, you can't wait for losers sometimes.
All right, so who does the board actually hire? Who do they directly hire?
By law, yeah, your superintendent, your principals, and your teachers. Basically, if they hold a certificate, the board has to hire them, the administration can't do that.
But in terms of like, direct hires, it's the superintendent. Because of the way the statute is written, you do have to approve the contracts with certificated staff, but we really don't encourage board members to like, get into the nitty-gritty of which second-grade classroom teacher candidate is the best, for a whole bunch of reasons that we can talk about if you want, but, so really, the person that you hire and fire is sitting right over there.
Actually, I would like you to tell me why that is.
Okay, so number one, those of you that have hired and fired people in the past, board members are also called upon to decide whether or not a contract should be non-earned or terminated. And board members who, like, we have a committee that sits on it, like, you want the people that you hired to succeed, and so we almost create a bias on the board for taking action on the, at the end of the contract by them being part of the interview process, that's number one. Number two, hiring and firing is like incredibly time-consuming, and I'm always worried that board members have not had the time to be appropriately trained on what you can and can't ask. Let me give you an example, we just hired a new attorney to work out of our South Dakota office, and she's a younger gal, and she mentioned that she was married, but there was no mention of kids. I kind of would've liked to have known, but it would be a potential Title VII violation for me to say, "So, do you have kids?" But that is the most natural thing in the world for someone to ask, because it's just like making conversation. So I'm worried that board members who have like jobs and lives and, you know, professional responsibilities outside the board, don't really have the time to get trained up in that stuff. And then the third thing is, I really think that you hire an administrator to gauge the educational credentials of somebody, I mean, I don't know if you want Saxon math or Hughton Niflin, or whether you use Madeline Hunter, or, you know what I mean? Like, all of that stuff, that's what you pay an administrator for, in my opinion. So those are the kind of the reasons why I generally discourage, sometimes we have boards that have a representative of the board on the hiring committee, and, but I don't really love it if we roll all the teaching candidates in front of the full board.
So then who hires the non-certificated employees?
Either, it can be the board, it can be the administration, our recommendation generally is to let the administration deal with classified or non-certificated staff, mostly because by statute, you guys have to hire or fire a certificated person, and that can prove problematic. They give you an extreme example, a teacher smacks a kid, we can't fire that teacher right away, they get due process, and they get the right to a hearing. And so that's frustrating in that, we kind of all know this teacher's going to get fired, it's going to happen, but we have to wait and drag that out. With classified staff, you don't have to do that, and so why would you, why would you wait, you know, you have a bus driver that smacked a kid, let's get that done now, and let's not wait two weeks for the board meeting to get that done. And that's always been my biggest thing about why we want the administration to take care of that. And again, it is time-consuming, and can be a political nightmare sometimes, and so let's let the administration handle that as opposed to the board.
I'll chime in and say that Nebraska is an employment-at-will state, which means, I mean, you've probably heard that said, that in general, employees are employed at the discretion of the employer. There's a special rule for teachers, the tenure laws change that employment at will, but even if we have a custodian that's stealing from us, if we give that, because if we say the board hires and fires, that person's gonna be on the payroll for an extra, potentially thirty days until we get a board meeting held to hire that person, that's just not a productive use of taxpayer money unless we're forced to do it. So that's why we strongly encourage the administration to be the one that hires and fires classified staff.
So Mr. Mom, McDonald Public Schools, who hires the employees other than the superintendent?
Nobody. Classified?
Yeah, classified.
He's there with me.
Which would be typical of the districts we've worked with.
All right, and does the board president have any special role in the hiring process?
No.
The other board members don't?
No, nothing, nothing special, no.
All right, and would it be proper for a current board member to go to a current employee of the school and tell them to be ready in case we decide to fire one of our coaches?
This is one, as we kind of, I don't, I truly don't know the backstory on this one, and I don't know that I want to know, but in general, we encourage boards to have the assignment of coaches also delegated to the administrative team, because they're just, again, they are more in the day-to-day functioning and expectations of coaching and sponsoring. So I would, if a board member had called me and said, "Hey Karen, I'm thinking about telling another staff member that we're gonna assign him to the volleyball coaching position or cross-country," I would sort of gently encourage that board member to talk to the superintendent about that, and to let the administration work through that process. So I don't, yeah. I know that in many, many districts, it is common for like the board to approve the roster of coaches for the following year. We've tried really hard to discourage that for a bunch of reasons, including the crazy review that I just sent the email update out about today, like, the whole extra-duty assignment process is way more complicated than whether or not Norris beat Waverly last week, you know, and I know that's, I mean, I've seen it from both sides now, and I just, there's a bunch of backend stuff that it's better for the administration to make those assignments, in my opinion.
All right, so switching on to employment here, what comprises an illegal contract between the district and employee?
Illegal contract? I think I know what you're getting, I wouldn't call it an illegal contract, I think the contract was legal, but a fraudulent contract, an illegal, something that gave a gift would be illegal, something, you know, they have to earn the money, you couldn't, you can't give away a month, but you can't make a gift of it generally, and so that would be an illegal contract.
Employing somebody not properly credentialed?
That would be illegal.
A contract to perform services for somebody out of state?
Out of your district?
No, out of the state of Nebraska.
Right, but if it was out of your district, no?
Well, you'd have to, we'd have to look at whether or not we're making a gift of public funds, like, let's say, let's make it Grand Island to make it easy, right? You could contract with Grand Island to provide speech services, or you're sending one of your kids there, they're sending one of their kids here, but we're gonna have to make sure that we're getting value for value. It's always about, are we protecting the public with this?
When you say not credentialed, would that include being hired for a position, but performing duties outside that position included hours of your contract? Does that make sense? Your contract, say your contract's only hours, right?
So I'm hired to do speech services for twenty hours a week, and then on my own, I add a few more hours, is that what you're saying?
Not even add a few more hours, say you only did them for ten hours, and you spent the other ten doing something outside of your credentials, right?
Well, so if I'm hired as a speech path worker twenty hours a week, but you don't have twenty hours of speech path work for me, again, assuming the administration knows what I'm doing and is keeping an eye on me, I don't know if it's automatically illegal that I'm, I don't know, a para for those other ten hours, I don't think that's a good deal for the district, but I don't think that's illegal. I think, I think the concern here is that I was hired for twenty hours a week and I only worked ten, and I never made up those extra hours, and I, I think that is, I don't think the contract itself is unlawful, but I think the employee, that should not happen.
Yeah, and with a certificated employee, they get, they get employed by FTE, full-time equivalency, so a .5 would be a half-time employee, a 1.0 would be a full-time employee. And so you could not, you could not employ somebody as a 1.0 employee and pay them as a 1.0 employee, and then employ them as a half-time employee. That, not intentionally, that would be fraudulent, and that would be a problem.
If they were to work all the hours, they could teach outside of their credentials, if they, if that's what's needed in the industry.
Yep, sure. Yep, you're gonna assign somebody else.
They would make the contract illegal, or...
That's right.
The school wouldn't be doing anything illegal by paying them on that contract.
That's right. And that happens all the time, yeah.
So what are the potential consequences for administrators and boards if a fraudulent contract is found to exist?
Well, for the administrator, there's a potential complaint against their license, and so if they, if they know somebody is getting paid for work they're not doing, that's a potential problem, that's, they have an ethical code, it's called Rule 27 from the Nebraska Department of Education, and they can't be a party to fraud, deceit, dishonesty, that kind of thing. And so if you are, that could lend yourself to a complaint against the license, which could, you could get reprimanded, you could have your ticket suspended, you could have it pulled for life if it's something really bad, but, so the administration, there's that. The board, potentially, if the board knows about it, and allows it to happen, they're basically an accessory to fraud. If they don't know about it, well, then, you know, they, and quite frankly, in most cases, the board's not gonna know about it.
That's what I'm asking, at what level are we supposed to know about that? I mean...
You should not be in here checking classrooms and taking attendance at eight, ten, noon, and three, you know?
But you see, I mean, I mean, they have, there'd be a lot of proof to be provided to prove that the board knew, right?
Exactly, right.
It's not an expectation of us to necessarily know.
Right, what did your secondary grade teacher do today?
I, yeah, I have a lot of, and I don't know about it every day. But that is where the, you just rely on the administrator, to make that person showing up every day or not, right?
You're looking at a direct supervisor in the administration to make sure the person's working what they're supposed to be working.
And also, the person that has the contract is under a professional obligation to, you know, they have a license, and Rule 27 applies to them too, and that, I would say that's where the first responsibility lies. And then second line would be admins, but I, I don't know how the board would know. We wouldn't, everything we've told you about keeping yourself clean for a potential conflict of interest or bias if there's a personnel matter, says that you shouldn't know.
And I'll explain, do you get, it is the weirdest thing, so imagine Ford Motor Company says, they have an employee, and the CEO says to the board, "I'm gonna fire this employee." Why? I can't tell you. You can't tell me, that's a run-of-the-company, we're in charge, what do you mean? That's what it's like to be on a school board. They don't get to know about personnel matters unless there's a hearing, generally. And so, it's frustrating to be a board because you might have patrons come up and say, "Hey, what happened to Sally?" And the board's going, "What do you, I have no idea, what happened to Sally?" That's why they don't know, and that's in part because of the law, and us lawyers saying, "We need them to be as ignorant and dumb about the subject as possible if there's ever a hearing that's brought to them," because they're supposed to be fair and impartial when they're judging.
It's designed to protect the teachers' rights, so that the teacher, so that the teacher gets a sort of fair shake in front of the board, gets to tell their side of the story before any final action is taken. It's a weird system.
So, having been on another school board besides this one, and going through teachers' contracts, when a board sits down and, you know, you've got the president and the secretary that sign every one of those contracts, to me, that, based upon what you've said, and I've talked to Nick about this, to me, that doesn't seem like an appropriate thing for a board to do then. And we've talked about a solution to that, where a teacher signs a letter of intent with the superintendent, because we already have the negotiated agreement, where both sides... superintendent because we already have the negotiated agreement where both sides have sat down and decided, here's the rules, you know, what we're going to follow for this negotiated agreement. So why would a board even sign those contracts under the scenario here we're talking about?
State law requires it.
I know, it's, because the UNO-.
The board has to sign those.
UNO- does not read, chapter 79 is the set of statutes that govern schools, right? And no state senator has ever sat down and read them beginning to end. Because 79, you probably know the number, 25, that says you have to have a written contract signed by the board.
818.
79818 says you have to have a written contract signed by the board and 79836, is that where the cancellation statutes are?
824, Bow.
Says that the board has to be impartial, right? So I mean, if somebody got elected and just read through all the statutes, they go, oh, this doesn't make any sense. But they, they don't do that because who wants to read all the crap the three biggest senators have put on boards?
So even if you did letters of intent, the board still has to.
The board has to sign the contract. Now, here's what, the way I think about it, you guys authorize the staffing levels, right? So you've said, and I don't, I don't happen to know, I should have looked, how many sections do you guys run into elementary, two or one?
Four.
Okay, so you all have said, we're going to have one section of first, one section of third, second, one section of third. So if Nick proposes that you hire 25 elementary staff members, you'd be like, hold on there, cowboy, where are these people all going, right? And that's appropriate oversight because you guys are supposed to set those kind of decisions. But you don't.
So really, the signatures are for the number of positions. We're signing this and you know, we have 25 positions, we have 25 contracts here that we're signing. We really don't care what the content of that is because that's his responsibility.
We are signing to say, yes, we want Sally to be one of those 25 based on Nick's recommendation.
Okay. So the superintendent plays a very key role in making sure those contracts are correct. And it's also true that if a teacher is not, does not have their certificate on AP and they are teaching, that actually the liability falls back to the board for the fact that we have a non-certificated employee who's teaching you.
Yes, and I've always thought that's not fair, but that's, that's what the statute says. So if you have a teacher without a certificate in the classroom and that teacher gets paid, yeah, the statute says that the board is personally liable.
Personally liable.
Yes.
Yeah, so the district doesn't cover that, but the locals have to.
That's right. That's why certification is such a huge issue.
So if we pay somebody $6,000, will we also not $1,000?
If you guys know that someone's certificate is not valid or lapsed or they never had one and you pay them six grand, yep, you guys, you're jointly and separately liable.
What about on a fraudulent contract?
That's different. A fraudulent contract, the only, the statute, because they're so concerned about making sure that teachers are appropriately credentialed, that they make a special example for paying a teacher without a certificate. But since they only say that you're liable for paying a teacher without a certificate, like by saying you're liable here, by definition, you're liable for anything else, if that makes sense. So if you, as I understand it, the concern we have is not that this person was inappropriately credentialed, that she didn't have a certificate, is that she didn't work all the hours. That would by, that would be defined out of the stuff you would be personally liable for. Now, there's a terrible case, special ed teacher who like passed herself off as this big expert and she didn't know any, she didn't have a certificate, she didn't have a college degree, she like beat the kids, it was terrible. That decision, and this is not a Nebraska case, but that decision said that the district was responsible and that board members were individually liable because you should have made sure that at least she had a teaching certificate.
But you know, what's, what's a district to do? You have somebody you want to hire in a position, why can't the administrator pay them more than what they're entitled to under the negotiating agreement?
I'm talking too much, but this is a case that I lost and I lost it against my alma mater. So this is pain that I, that you all are going to have to share with me. So there is a decision from Crete, Crete Public School, Crete Education Association versus Crete Public Schools where a board paid a teacher like a signing bonus to get him to come. The teachers' union sued because the union says, not only does the union contract create a floor, but it also creates a ceiling. Because the union doesn't want the board paying somebody a sweetheart deal like outside the confines of the agreement. I thought we had a winning case. I fought my heart out and I lost it in front of the Nebraska Supreme Court because the Nebraska Supreme Court said we could not pay extra, so we can only pay what's in the contract period.
Yeah, it's a prohibited labor practice to pay anything outside of that negotiating agreement.
Lost that case 15 years ago, I'm not bitter at all.
So if a previous administrative team had been doing that action hypothetically, what would the new administrator need to do?
Clean it up.
And how do they go back maybe to that?
Well, make sure that person's working their hours or reduce the, reduce the contract of the hours that are actually being worked and stop paying the extra money. That'll get you into the CIR, get you into court, and that's an easy loser right there.
Any other questions?
I would say, you said that was a union situation that you had. If they're not part of the union and they have no union representation, how does that change that?
It doesn't. They are still covered by that negotiated agreement. They may not get union representation while going through this, but they are still, whether they're a member of the union or not a member of the union, that negotiated agreement applies to them.
Think of it like this, you wouldn't want to have a special sweetheart deal for non-union members. What would the union do then? Like who would be a member of the union if he got paid more for not being? You see what I'm saying? So that, the rules apply equally whether you're a member of the union or not.
Any other questions on the contract issue?
You have to be certified and have a certification contract in order to be hired.
Yep.
You can't be almost graduated or can you be in school, college, you know, and get a job at a public high school?
You could, but you would want to structure the contract, basically it'd be a contingent contract. It's, we're hiring you contingent on you completing your study and getting your certificate. And so generally, you would put a deadline in this and by August 1st, you will have this certificate. If they don't, you, you don't have a contract.
So if they haven't completed that certification by that set time, say it's even in the middle of the school year?
Yep.
That contract is then terminated?
Correct, it's void.
So a great example of that is Nebraska, you just have to pass what's called the Praxis, which is like a subject matter test. We've had, we have several teachers every year that, our recent graduates got hired at their first school, but they can't get the Praxis passed, so they don't get their certificate and then we have to cancel their contracts. But it's okay to hire somebody pending that as long as they aren't actually teaching in the classroom without a certificate. So you know, you've signed contracts in April and May for next year, then they've got all summer to get their act together and get their certificate.
And there's provisions for.
Yes.
Time frame is on that as well.
Yep.
So that, that falls in their student teaching, they don't have to necessarily require that if they already basically have the job?
Um.
Is that, my question is, what's they got to do?
So let me, let me repeat your question and see if I'm understanding. So sometimes.
Most you have to do is student teaching.
Yep.
You know, teacher, I'm trying to learn whatever. So if we hire somebody, and maybe I'm going too big, but make sure, and they're the whatever teacher, but they're not certified, and there's certain, usually a certain amount of hours for this student teaching required to get that certificate, is that their job placement?
There's two pieces to that. One, there's special exceptions for student teaching. And so they're allowed to do that even though they don't have a certificate. Number two, we're not paying them. And so.
For that time of their required hours.
Exactly.
Sometimes you can have, I mean, music when the music, your music's a hard to fill area. So you have a music teacher who's retiring, you have a dynamite student teacher, you might say to that kid while they're still student teaching, hey, we're going to want you next year. Nothing improper about that at all. We have sometimes situations where like music teacher, you know, can't perform their duties because they've got cancer or whatever. Sometimes we have special deals that we work out with somebody that's picking up their credential because the department will work with us in hard-to-hire areas. But in general, the rule is you have to have your ticket to teach. All of this, I see you going, like all this stuff, I know, it's.
All right, and the last section we had were some discussions at a public meeting about the state of the district's finances. And so if there's an area you can pop in here, I might ask Mr. Mumm a few questions or if you want to chime in. Mr. Mumm and Mrs. Bowe, when, when Mr. Mumm arrived at the school, what was the state of the school finances of Gilner Bunn's schools? And why do you, why do you say that?
Well, I would say that, that because our depreciation account had $70,000 in it and you know, I've been taught generally say you want to run between 350 and 450. New bus, boiler goes out, some kind of an issue. Special building was at 146,000 when I got here. Usually like to run that 350 to 500. And you know, the way I budget is same way I do at home. You know, we're going to have enough money in the bank to pay our bills if something happens, so I like to keep three months of bills on hand. And then in the general fund, that's about 800 to 900,000 here. And we had about 450 when I got here. I would say that a couple of things that I looked into, there was a couple of months that you were wondering how you might get your bills paid.
That's not a problem anymore.
Today, we got 364 in the special building, 374 depreciation and 880,000 in the general fund.
So for Steve and Karen, what is the public right to come and look at the school's finances and books?
They can, I mean, their public records, number one, they're publicly available on NDE's website, any of the financial reports are, they're all there. But they can, they can also come to the school, get copies or get links to the websites. So yeah, they can, they can look at the financial documents at any time.
It's actually a real common public records request for people to want to know, you know, what's our cash position, you know, what's our, what's in building under, whatever, whatever. That's, that's not uncommon, people ask that.
All right, and Mr. Mumm, if you can answer the question, due to a fraudulent contract, how much did the district lose?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
Approximately.
Mr. Mumm, would you explain the process you used to hire the school's administrative assistant?
Yeah, I took all applications, anybody that was interested, posted that, got a committee together, had a committee of administrators, the other office, personnel, asked the same questions through the process of interviewing and I interviewed everybody and got feedback from everybody that was part of the interview and I made the decision.
Were any board members part of that process?
No.
Mr. Mumm, what is the enrollment of our school today?
252.
And is that higher or lower than the previous year?
It's 30 higher than last year. The year before that, the year before I came, it was one student less than what it was last year. Then it just kind of trends down from there, 220s to 210s to 200s to, I think it's 1670 or 177.
So much higher than what we've had previously.
Yeah.
All right, and then if you can, apparently, can you explain, when we have a student who opts into our district, is there a financial incentive that comes along with that?
There is option aid and Nick's going to know these numbers way better than I do because it's.
We got 760, 765,000 last year, we get 720.
It's about eight grand a kid, plus a nice.
I think it's 80, just a little over 80, 81 something, 81, 82.
It doesn't cover the whole cost, right?
No.
And what other state aid do we give beyond special ed? Zero.
That sounds bad. In some ways, it's good, right? Because we have districts that are like biting their nails waiting for that state aid to come out and that goes up in them. So I mean, for what it's worth.
Anybody have any other questions or like missed something? Okay. All right, we appreciate you being here, but we're going to keep you here for a few minutes. We got a couple items of business and we're going to go into executive session to hear some legal advice, so sure would. All right, we're going to move on to item B. Discuss, consider, take all necessary action regarding policy. We are going to forward 5003 to the next meeting. We are going to take, discuss, consider, take all necessary action regarding policy 3006, naming school facilities and property. Can I get a motion to approve policy 3006, the naming school facilities and property policy?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second you.
And motion by Lyman, seconded by Shet, to approve board policy 3006, naming school facilities and property. Hearing discussion? Hearing none? Will vote Watson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Hopple?
Yes.
Lyne?
Yes.
Shet?
Yes.
Motion 260. Take all necessary action to accept the 2020-2021 school district audit. I know Mrs. Bowe, you've been working very hard on that, so.
She's here too long, but she's done a great job and it was submitted on time and everything, so we just, I just need the board to accept, you know, really prove that it is what it is, they came up with this, the findings, so accept the audit, it's completed, internal mistake.
All right, can I get a motion to accept the 2020-2021 school district audit?
I'll accept it.
I'll second you.
At the motion by Shet, seconded by Hopple, to accept the 2020-2021 school district audit. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Will vote Watson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Hopple?
Yes.